A baby is born. Cute. He's already surrounded by technology. By age four, she knows how to use a smartphone. He's reading. No, not from this, this. She's making a digital presentation. You don't even know what that is. He has an interest. No, not that, that. By middle school, she has built her own website and her first app. In high school?
With my Michelson interferometer, I can measure down to the fraction of the wavelength of light.
The world is changing. And they are preparing for jobs that don't even exist yet.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Orange County School Board. We have a wonderful meeting tonight, and we're going to start with a very special recognition. But before I do that, if everybody could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, and then a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your head for a moment of silence. We have some very special guests who are joining us to be recognized tonight, and if the hyperbole that you're going to hear from this board seems a little bit over the top, it's because we are truly very, very excited about what we're here to recognize tonight and to talk about, myself in particular, but I know a number of other board members as well. And that is because we are recognizing the Dr. Phillips Charities tonight, and we are specifically recognizing a new program that they are beginning called the Dr. Phillips Charity School Certification Program. And you're going to hear more about that in a moment. That program was approved by the Dr. Phillips Charities Board of Directors, and it will provide, get this, folks, $1 million to help ensure access to high school students for career and technical options and opportunities. And with us tonight, we have a number of board members from Dr. Phillips Charities, and if you could please stand as I call your name, beginning with, of course, somebody well-known to us, our board chairman, Mr. Jim Henson. Jim? And then also joining Mr. Henson tonight are his board members, Ken Robinson, Commissioner Don Ammerman, Dr. Margaret Miller, somebody also well-known to us who does wonderful work as a partner of Orange County Public Schools, Mr. Jim Ferber, Harvey Burnett, and their director of grants, Dr. Ann Manley.
Yeah.
Sarah. I think Sarah, I think History Center, it threw me for a minute, and somebody we all know well as the head of our History Center, Sarah Van Orshtill. Welcome, Sarah. Y'all can be seated. Thank you very, very much. The plan, and in a moment, I'm going to invite up the Dr. Phillips Charities to tell us a little bit more detail, but the plan for school year 2014-15 under this initiative is to assist five high schools to earn this award. One high school will be selected from each of our learning communities, making those schools geographically dispersed throughout the county. So I don't want to still hiss under and say anything more about details of the program until we hear from the board chair, but I'd like to invite up to the lecturer now the board chair, Mr. Jim Henson. Jim, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Jenkins, our superintendent, members of the staff. We're pleased to be here, and we're extremely pleased to have another opportunity to work with Orange County School System. We have just finished over the last two years a program where we provided new clothing to over 6,000 homeless children in Orange County and about 40,000 pieces of clothing, and that was a wonderful experience with the school board. Their cooperation really helped us make it work 100%. So we're really pleased about that. For a number of years, we've been trying to find a way that we can be involved in teaching young people about skills that are available to them other than ones that might accrue because they've gone to college. Teaching in trade schools. This comes about frankly from a legacy of Dr. Phillips back in the 1920s or so, when we were in the citrus business, and citrus is cyclical, so you had slow times, and we had good people working for us, and in those slow times, you would lose those good people. So Dr. Phillips says, "We want to find a way to retain them during the slow times." So he established a program within his own company of teaching those employees how to be carpenters, bricklayers, roofers, plumbers, electricians, and so forth. And that's frankly how we got into the real estate business. We built our buildings on our own property and then leased them, and it's those rents that help sustain us in what we can provide to needy organizations and well-run organizations in Orange County and in Osceola County. So that was the impetus of it, but we struggled for a number of years of finding the way that we could make that happen. And we looked at several opportunities that were in other areas that had been successful, but then we came down to it, and I said, "There's got to be something here that's already in progress that we can just give our support to, to make it work better and cover more young people in Orange County." So our board approved the concept, and we asked Dr. Manley to look at Orange County and what trade school opportunities and classes and teachers that were available there, and how we might be able to provide our support to make it even stronger. So that's how it came about. It came back to us with Dr. Manley's efforts and these members of the school system's efforts of a program where we might be able to fund in five different high schools. Programs to teach young people about opportunities for them to be able to take care of their families and even have an opportunity later on to own and run their own businesses. So we have chosen these along with the school's board representatives, five high schools, and we are providing this $1 million to accomplish this, $200,000 to each of the schools, and we expect it to be a tremendous success because we know we're going to have the full cooperation of you and the entire school system. So we're proud to be here, proud to be able to help, and we expect the young people are going to benefit greatly because of this. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Henson, and on behalf of the board, I really do want to say thank you so much for all Dr. Phillips Charities does for Orange County Public Schools. Members of the public, you should know, and the superintendent is better at me of giving you the exact numbers, but a short five years ago, we had fewer than 2,000 homeless students in Orange County Public Schools, and the latest number is where we were bumping close to 7,000 homeless students. So that Cool Fit program that you spearheaded and your charity spearheaded has made just an absolute tremendous difference in a very real way in the health and welfare of thousands of disadvantaged Orange County Public School children whose families are going through some very, very difficult time. So thank you for that. And I'm going to speak, and I rarely do because I get in trouble when I speak on behalf of the board sometimes, but on this one, I feel very confident. Each and every member of this eight-member school board feels very passionately about our need to deliver career technical education in a meaningful way, and it's refreshing to all of us that you finally start to see the national media wake up to the fact that every child is not going to go on to college, and no matter how much we wish for every child to go on to college, it simply belies reality. In fact, a lot of times when I'm out there on the stump speaking, I throw out a number that's very shocking to a lot of folks, but it's actually in U.S. Census data, as we sit here and speak tonight, 70% of Orange County's population has no college experience and no college diploma. And while we hope to move the needle on that, I think realistically, in my lifetime, we'd be lucky to get that number down to 60% or 50%. That's just the nature of what I like to call sometimes the human bell curve of life and people pursuing other avenues. And we're starting to see as a country more and more the value of career technical education. The other thing I like to share all the time, and thank you, board members indulging me in this little speech, but we've got to do a better job of pushing down career technical education down to the high school level because for too long in this country, we've made students go through high school, punch the ticket, get what has increasingly become a one-size-fits-all college preparatory curriculum, high school diploma, before they can go on to one of our wonderful technical schools, whether Mid-Florida, Winter Park Tech, and get that meaningful certification. So what I personally love about this initiative, and I know all the board members have studied it because we're so passionate about it, is it does a number of things. Number one, it pushes down that certification down to the high school levels. Number two, it provides an incentive for the high schools to deliver more in the way of certifications for those students at the high school level and provides for a monitoring component. And number three, and we just had a luncheon or breakfast last Friday about this topic, it does something that we frankly all want to do a better job at but struggle because of our funding constraints, and you all have really stepped up to help us here, which is also a guidance counselor component in there to get the guidance counselors more well-versed on steering these students into very rewarding, high-paid, technical fields today. And I'm always quick to share with people, when we talk vocational-led today, career technical education, we're not talking, you know, your father or my father, or even my own car mechanics, hairdressers, we're talking high-skilled occupations, we're talking computer networkers, we're talking computer-assisted designers, we're talking X-ray technicians, we're talking high-skill fields that really people can make, in many cases, a more lucrative career out of than even somebody who has a college degree has. So I applaud you for this. I cannot thank you enough, and we really appreciate you stepping up in this way. Mrs. Gordon, did you want to? I didn't mean to, okay.
You added it all.
All right, that's a first in the history of the school board. Mrs. Gordon, Vice Chair Gordon unpunched her button.
I know. You said it.
Yes, Dr. Jenkins.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wouldn't let this opportunity pass without adding my thanks to this wonderful organization for how you come alongside Orange County Public Schools and help our children. Dr. Phillips Charities has a long history of supporting worthy causes throughout our community that are quite impressive. We are just honored to be among the recipients of one of your grants. So many of your board members are friends to OCPS as well. Thank you for being here tonight. If Rita were here, I would remind everyone, to her embarrassment, that the Cool Fit program really was Rita's baby along with her husband, Jim Henson, and they saw that through to its completion, and it had a tremendous impact on our students. Can't thank you enough for that. So every time they come, although it started two years ago, I always want to mention it if you give Rita our regards, Mr. Henson. Suffice it to say, we have philanthropic efforts throughout the community, none, I believe, rise to the level of this kind of commitment and this kind of donation on behalf of our children. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Well, I do know that the board, Mr. Henson, would like to shake all of your board members' hands, and your hand in particular, and we have a small token of our appreciation, some certificates we'd like to hand you. We know from all the good work that Dr. Phillips Charities does, you probably have scores of these in boxes in your office, but it's a small token of our recognition, and thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Well, if you could, we really would like to shake your hand and say thank you personally to your entire board.
Glad to be alive. Wait, what?
Feeling good. Oh, Castor. The kids are toward my daughter's school.
Seriously?
How's North Florida? North Florida?
Yeah.
All right, we do have a strategic plan update tonight, a very important one. So, Dr. Jenkins, let me turn it over to you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As board members will recall, when we settled our DSEG issues and were declared unitary, we agreed voluntarily that we would regularly report matters that were included in that unitary status agreement. And so each year, throughout the year, you get portions of that report every quarter, and then by the end of the year, it is compiled into one single unitary status report. Your committee, your unitary status committee also receives these reports in their formative nature and then in their final summative nature as well. So tonight, we have for you the unitary status report regarding human resources. Dr. Carol Kent will take you through it.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Jenkins, and good evening, Chairman Sablet, the school board, staff, and the community. Tonight, I'm going to report a review that was established in 2010 when OCPS was ruled by the United States District Court to have met unitary status. This analysis contains a copy of the School Board Policy GCE adopted December 14, 2010, which illustrates the value and commitment of this organization to employ staff that reflects, sorry, technical difficulties, hold on one sec, that reflects the broad diversity in backgrounds and experiences that characterize our nation. When you access the report, you can see that it includes a table of contents that you can click on to take you to a specific area of focus, and the data includes learning communities, departments, pools, and more, but the data drills down to actual people and is shown using a variety of visual graphs for comparison. You can also see evidence of our annual district-wide review of this policy. So when you go to the web on ocpss.net, you can click on School Board tab, and on the right-hand side, you will see unitary status. You'll also see recruitment reports. They've updated it now to reflect 2014, and you can click on that. It is extremely important for everyone to know that OCPS has been in compliance with unitary status agreement since 2010. When we go out to recruit for our district and considering diversity, there's a lot that happens between a candidate and actually becoming an employee. These variables include the vacancy rate, if we have budget cuts, if the candidate has the proper certification or licensure, if they meet our minimum qualifications for the job, if they pass our security and performance clearance checks, our reference checks, and then the interest of the candidate to come and relocate to Central Florida. But when our recruitment team attracts a candidate to OCPS, we get very specific to help with those areas. So when we consider we have been in compliance with unitary status for years, even if our numbers remain flat, it is important to examine the areas where we continue to diversify our workforce. So our recruitment highlights for African-American candidates this past year. In vocational adult ed, we increased by 8.21% for African-Americans. In our alternative ed and exceptional ed, there was an average of an 18% increase. In our assistant principal pool, there was a 1% increase, and in our internal assistant principals, it was a 2.5 increase. In our principal pool, there was an 8% decrease. With regard to the principal pool, it includes all those principals who are in current positions or are waiting to be in a position for a principalship. I did review the data of those principals retiring from the district, and we did have several. We also did not have a significant number of assistant principals enter the principal pool last year, which may have skewed our numbers. It is also important to note that a person who is in the pool is not necessarily an employee of our district, and when you enter the pool, revealing your ethnicity or your race is not a requirement. So there is an unknown category in there that we are not able to calculate. We've also had some significant growth in recruitment and employment of Hispanic-Latino employees across the district. You will notice overall, with our new hires last year, with sitting at approximately 23,000 employees, we had a 4% increase in Hispanic-Latino. A benefit of this report is to assist with our recruitment process with precision. So as we continue our ongoing recruitment efforts, we will include the following departments to come join recruitment efforts, or we'll develop specific job fairs to assist with increasing diversity in specific areas. So if you look at the areas of gender, we will look at recruitment again at administrators, female administrators, and transportation. We will also look at recruiting more males in our instructional positions, our 10-month contract at the district office, our exceptional education administrators. Another area that we examine is African-Americans. When we go to recruit this year, we will bring to the table representatives from the southeast and east learning communities, vocational education adult centers, 10-month contracts at the district office, the assistant and the principal pools. And we look for areas of focus for Hispanic recruitment. We will bring to the table the west and north learning community representatives, alternative exceptional and vocational education, those who are on 10-month contracts at the district office, and those who have 12-month contracts, assistant and principal pools.
Members of the board, just a couple of comments. I like, and I know the board is fully aware of this, but I'd like for the general public to be aware as well. When we were declared unitary, we are not under any guidelines or ratios or quotas to meet. That's important for the general public to understand. This board, however, voluntarily agrees to a commitment of maintaining a diverse workforce. That is not because we're under a quota or a ratio or a number to watch, it's because we're committed, it's the right thing to do. We want our workforce to be diverse. And what we committed to was regularly reporting out to the unitary status committee and to our general public around those efforts. But I'd like for folks to be clear, the unitary status took us out of any specific requirement. We were declared unitary, meaning we don't have discrimination in place, but we're committed to diversity in our workforce, and we'll continue to report out as we agree to in that unitary status agreement. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Well, before I go to board member questions, I would be remiss in asking, I don't know if there is anybody here, but are any of the members of our unitary status advisory committee with us tonight? No? Okay. Well, those folks give us great hours in terms of commitment to our district, so we know who many of them are, but...
And Chairman, they meet tomorrow night.
They meet tomorrow night. Okay. We'll be sure to pass along our thanks for their service. Vice Chair Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm so happy that you mentioned that because I know there was very little said about it, but I think this board, Joey Cato was president at the time, chair of the board, and Mr. Chairman, you came in and you just picked up the throttle and just went with our new superintendent. But that was a great day for members of this board when we signed that agreement. What I'm excited about is this condensed report, and even the little thick one we received on our thumb drive, but this is a fine report. I cannot believe how awesome this report is. The part that I love the most is we did get in a lot of trouble because of a unitary status committee that had been ongoing, but now the committee, they have alternates, all of the board members' communities are represented, the General Counsel and his staff has seen to it, along with Dr. Jenkins and her staff, to see to it that this is a very, very active committee. One point I want to bring out that I want to highlight is that we are on the web. You can pick up the entire report on the web. This has never happened in the history, even since we became and received our unitary status. The best thing, and I saw Darrell Flynn, a board member, shaking their head, we are in compliance. For so many years, we were out of compliance, pretty 50-something years, we were out of compliance, but all of our areas of focus, we are in compliance. The neatest thing is our minorities. I think Dr. Jenkins has received all kinds of accolades and awards for creating the two major departments under Dr. Schula and Dr. James Lawson with our minority recruit, but I think we're excited about the programs. And one area that was mentioned was the certification and licensure. And Dr. Jenkins is working with, along with Dr. James Lawson and several of the professors at UCF, to see that those African-American males, Hispanic males, Latino males, Haitian males, that are interested, and any male that is interested in becoming certified, that's already holding a degree, that want to get licensed, they are working out that program as I speak now, and she's gone out there along with her staff to see, and UCF is excited about it. They have adopted a program Dr. Lawson is working on that came out of South Carolina for male that we are really excited about, and I can't wait to see that come before the board. But the certification, I'm excited about. We are still recruiting, our names are coming in, our people can call in if they're interested in even changing their profession, which I think is wonderful. We were, I want to point out, when you talked about the gender, the female in transportation, you know that's a big change, but just having females in a lot of areas, and I just glorify when I look at Mr. Morris Department and facilities and see the number of female that's beginning to be added there. So I really, I'm giving accolades to this report, Dr. Jenkins. Even when you mentioned about the decrease, people are retiring, and we're trying to replace them. But we have placed in, since the signing of this bill by Ms. Cato and the board members, I want you to know that there have been more African-Americans in place and moving into high position. We're still trying to get the male high school principal, okay? That's the thing, every time we get them, Dr. Jenkins knows, they find a way to, somebody else recruit them out of here because they're so good. So we're going to have to think of a way to try to maintain them. So, Mr. Chairman, I really want to say I'm excited. I think every board member at this table is following this, but to be able to say that we are in compliance in every area deserves a wonderful round of applause. We are still recruiting, our names are coming in, our people can call in if they're interested in even changing their profession, which I think is wonderful. We were, I want to point out, when you talked about the gender, the female in transportation, you know that's a big change. But just having females in a lot of areas, and I just glorify, when I look at Mr. Morris' department and facilities and see the number of female that's beginning to be added there. So I really, I'm giving accolades to this report, Dr. Jenkins. Even when you mentioned about the decrease, people are retiring and we're trying to replace them. But we have placed in, since the signing of this bill by Ms. Cato and the board members, I want you to know that there have been more African-Americans in place and moving into high position. We're still trying to get the male high school principal, okay? That's the thing, every time we get them, Dr. Jenkins knows, they find a way to, somebody else recruit them out of here, because they're so good. So we're going to have to think of a way to try to maintain them. So, Mr. Chairman, I really want to say, I'm excited. I think every board member at this table is following this. But to be able to say that we are in compliance in every area deserves a wonderful round of applause and an accolade, and I give it to you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, and Vice Chair Gordon, I think we would be remiss if we didn't thank you for your leadership. We would have never achieved unitary over status if it weren't for your leadership and your stature in your district and in the community. So it's very important to me that members of the audience and anybody watching this realize what an important role Mrs. Gordon had to do with this, and what an important role she continues to have to do. And monitoring is a politically correct thing to say, but the truth is, she's on our, she's making sure that we dot every i and cross every t on this, and it's sort of an inside joke up here, we're laughing, because, believe me, she lets us know if we stray one bit from that order and from our obligations under that order. So thank you, Mrs. Gordon. Mr. Roach.
You know, time flies. I think it was, Cat, five years ago at least, or more, that we achieved unitary status, but it's good to see that we're still keeping our eye on the ball. These reports are very important. And Cat, I would add to that, that your persistence also was very key in this, because there was at least a three-year process prior to achieving unitary status that came into play. A lot of work went down, and Cat really was on top of it for all of us, and all of us were on it, but she did lead the pack on that one. I want to get, if I can, numbers with this, on both the Latino, Hispanic, and the African-American assistant principal pools, it was a 1% increase. How many people is that? What's 1% represent in raw numbers?
I can't give you an exact number, but approximately, we have about 300 people in each of the pools.
300 people in the pool?
In each pool.
So that would be like, that would be three people increase. Is that right, 1% or 300? About three people in each one of them? Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Ms. Cato.
I'm just curious. I know many years ago, we were having problems recruiting some qualified minority candidates, because a lot of times, they would have two or three or four job offerings from either competing schools or competing school districts, and that we weren't seeing the numbers coming out of colleges that we expected to perhaps see. Has that trend changed anymore, or is it still as competitive as it was back many years ago?
When we're looking for minority candidates, it is extremely competitive. One of the things that we have adopted, though, is we offer interviews on the spot when we're recruiting. I have a recruitment team right now in Tennessee that's working with trifecta. Basically, they're looking at Vanderbilt, Tennessee, and Virginia all at the same time. And they do interviews on the spot, and we offer district contracts to those candidates we feel are the top-notch in that moment. When we did it last year, you should have seen the lines that we had at our table as opposed to other tables, because we were offering jobs on the spot, and they were able to go home before they graduated and have a job on their hand. There's pros and cons to that. Sometimes we can get them and keep that connection. That's our goal in the recruitment office, is once we do get them to sign the contract, is to continue to build that relationship. And we are looking at different ways that we can continue that relationship, whether it be electronically or face-to-face, so that we get every candidate that we extend a hand to, and they extend back. But yes, highly competitive. Actually, last year, the number for the highest graduating Hispanic educators was 111 approximately, and it was in Dade County College. And that was nationwide.
Wow. Another thing, some of the youth work that I used to do, one of the trends we were seeing is, you know, years ago, you would recruit, and you were going to work for IBM, or you were going to work for Xerox, or whomever, and you would hear people talk about going to work for a company. And then the trend was, the young people started saying, "I'm going to work in Atlanta," or "I'm going to work in DC." And it wasn't the company they were going to, it was the community they were going to, and what the activities were that were offered in that community. Is that what you're seeing as a trend with the college graduates right now, is they're looking for a vibrant community that has the arts and has outdoor activities?
I can tell you, we do push that quite a bit. We also push that we're very close to the beaches, but that we have a very vibrant nightlife as well, because remember, we're dealing with, we're dealing with young candidates who really want to have a broad exposure when they, they don't want to just work, they want to have a life outside of the work. And I do think Central Florida offers that. Stop laughing, it does. Central Florida does offer that, and we do push that very hard. And you're right, it is easier to, I would love to be with them right now, because you know where they are, it's freezing.
Yeah.
So all they're doing is pushing our sunshine, and that people are going to the beach and out in their boats right now. I know that's what they're doing, and so keep it freezing up there, because they'll come down in droves.
Well, and so far, we don't need snow tires, we don't need chains, and we don't have ice.
And we emphasize that. We take total advantage of that situation.
You know, I just found it very interesting, as I would talk to young people after they graduated, and it never was the company they were going to work for. It was always, "I'm going to Atlanta, I'm going..."
Surrounding area.
And, you know, I just wondered. Thank you.
Yeah, we push it.
Well, I can't resist, to a young person, it's Hotlanta, not Atlanta. I've never known a young person that care about nightlife. Come on, Dr. Cat.
Yeah, me neither.
You handled that well. Sort of.
Thanks, thanks for pointing it out.
All right, on a more serious note, question for you, and I feel like I should know this, but help me understand, what is the distinction of a 10-month contract at the district office as opposed to a 12-month contract? And we say that's in emphasis.
Okay, it's actually defined in your notebook, because you will have a section that talks about 10-month. And not all of them are instructional. You'll have nurses that are 10-month, we'll have some behavior specialists, we'll have speech pathologists. There's several in that category. Some of them are professional instructional, and some are just instructional, so that's why, but they're all 10-month, that's why categorized at 10-month. When you look at 12-month, it can range from the superintendent to classified personnel that work on 12-month contracts. So it's, that's like a half-page of description of who's in that category. If you turn to that, and it's about 11 fonts, so it includes several different categories of employees.
So when we say the area, and the reason I ask, when we say the area of focus for African-Americans is one of them, one of the five, is 10-month contracts at the district office, I guess I'll go and look at the definition, but that connotates we're looking more for whether it's in the nursing arena, the psychologist arena, as opposed to senior administrators who are on a 12-month contract?
Correct.
Okay. I'm glad I asked, thank you. Well, Dr. Jenkins, I just want to commend you and Dr. Kent on this. One of the things I've always liked about her department and the way she runs it, is I truly do believe, under your leadership, that you've been very, very innovative, and you've listened to the board. So a couple of things in this report that won't be obvious to anybody but us on the board, but, you know, I have spoken out in the past that, well, we have good concentrations of, for example, Latinos educators and support staff in the Southeast area, that I've never understood why it would be focused there, simply because of populations focused there, that I think the message we need to be sending is, we need Latino teachers, educators, administrators, classified personnel in all of our learning communities. So I love that in your report now, you're pointing out to us that you're focusing on recruiting Hispanic-Latinos in the West and North learning communities, where I think they have been very underrepresented. And the same thing with African-Americans in the Southeast and East learning communities, where I think they've been very underrepresented. So thank you for that. On the innovation front, just as an FYI, because I've also loved how innovative you've been, is, that goes something another board member said, I do recognize it is extremely difficult, I would think, probably more than any other cultural group, to recruit Haitian educators. But I do hope that you continue to look on it, because it is such a substantially growing part of our student population, and I think all of us on the board feel that we've really got to do all we can to get as many Haitian educators, Haitian-American educators hired as we possibly can. And lastly, in the innovation arena, and this is sort of a crazy idea, and I don't have, you know, the ability to flush it out now, but some organizations do a really wonderful job of growing their own talent. You know, the most obvious example, for example, is the US military. You know, a lot of young people go in the US military, not because they have any driving desire to be an infantryman, or a pilot, or a sailor, but because they want to go into college and get a specialized program, whether it's in medical care, or logistics, or some other field. So when I look at our Latino populations, and I look at some of the struggles they have to go through in our African-American populations, and our Haitian populations in particular, I would just love to see us come up with some type of innovative program, where we figure out a way to start to identify talent, even among our high school students, and figure out a way to incentivize them to go on and get an education degree, and if they were to return to Orange County public schools, maybe we could figure out a way to help them get through that, and then know that they have a job waiting for them at the end of the rainbow. Because I do think it's going to be increasingly hard, or very hard, to recruit Haitian-American educators in particular, and Hispanics and African-Americans. You have?
We have a list already, Dr. Jenkins, and her staff, along with Dr. Lawson. We've started already.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Ms. Cato, did you have some closing comments, or I forget to unpunch you? Forgot to? All right. Well, Dr. Kent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Jenkins, newly appointed administrators.
Yes, Chairman, we have two tonight. First, we have Margaret Olmo, who was a math teacher. She will be the new assistant principal at Union Park Middle School.
Good evening. First and foremost, I would like to thank God for making all of this possible. To Mr. Sublett, to Joey Cato, District Board Representative, and to the rest of the school board, thank you for approving the recommendation. To Dr. Jenkins and Dr. Jara for the recommendation. To Dr. Diaz and Mr. Wright, thank you for your support and commitment to Union Park Middle School. Thank you, Ms. Olmo, for your support, encouragement, and guidance through this whole process. Thank you for selecting me to be on your admin team. I look forward to working with you as we, I'm going to look away here, as we look, as we work towards achieving our school goals. To Dr. Gordon Fernandez for being my mentor, to my parents, and Rafael Olmo, you guys, thank you for all of your support and encouragement and wisdom that you have bestowed upon me. Dad, you said that hard work pays off, and it does. To my children, Desmond, who's outside feeding my granddaughter, to Daniel, and to Lariana, this is our evening, I couldn't have done this without you. To my daughter-in-law, Jennifer, Samantha, my grandchildren, Dylan, Tristan, and Desi, and to Charles, you guys are my biggest fans. Thank you, thank you so much.
Next, we have Jennifer Bellinger. She was the assistant principal at Lake Nona High School. She will be the new principal at Meadow Woods.
Good evening, I'm so sorry. Good evening. I would like to take this time to thank Chairman Sublett, past school board members, Cat Gordon and Darryl Flynn, and my new school board member, Mr. Rick Roach, and the rest of the school board, Dr. Jenkins. I would like to say thank you for this recommendation. I would also like to thank my mentors, Dr. Bridget Williams, Dr. Lawson, thank you, and my mentor for life, Maxine Risper. I would like to also take this opportunity to thank my family, my friends, my supporters, and also my past principals, Mrs. Maggie Nampon, and, oh Lord, y'all know, and Dr. Bradshaw. I'm appreciative of this opportunity, and I'm just ready to get to work. Look for great things from Meadow Woods Middle School.
Thank you, Dr. Jenkins. Mr. Roach.
You know, Meadow Woods Middle is such a special school to me, board members. It was the first school, I think, I dedicated when I got elected to the school board, which that makes it 15, 16 years old. And I still have the little stallion that Chuck Rivers gave us, the first principal there, and has been the principal ever since, up on my desk. Matter of fact, I think it's Mustangs, and whatever it is, it's a horse. And I've got it, I kept it. They call them so many things, stallions, horses, Mustangs, I don't know, but it's a horse, for sure. But I've always enjoyed going down there, because Chuck is such a people guy. And what was interesting, they had a retirement deal for him the other night, and I went down there to present him with one of our gold coins and say goodbye to him. But I told the crowd, I'd never heard the district talk like they did on looking for a principal, that a number of people would say up here that it would be very tough to replace him. That's what they said. So, and I'm not saying that to put pressure on you, Jennifer, but I'm telling you that that is, I think that says a lot about you. It says a lot about you, because I was really curious, who in the world would they put into that kind of pressure pot? So I know you'll do really well down there, and Chuck's such a great guy, but it's a new day, and it's your next 15 years, huh? You can just, you can lead the horses, whatever they are, to victory, okay? Congratulations to you.
Mrs. Gordon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jennifer, you know you're loved up here, you know, and you know Darryl's going to say something, I'm sure, but Mr. Roach, when he just jumped right in, the reason why you're going to do well in the pressure cooker, we were all back there fighting over you. And then Dr. Bridget Williams told me that Ms. Risper was out there, and I'm going, where? And so she said in the back, I said, oh, I gotta go and say something to her. And then I said, well, why are you here? And she said, I'm here because of Jennifer. And I looked around, and everybody else I talked to said, I'm here because of Jennifer. And then I said, oh my goodness, we couldn't thank you enough. We know you're going to do well, because we know that District Five is a training ground, and you did so well, we just allowed you to go on, and we didn't keep you. Ask Bridget, every now and then, we'll hold on to you. Ask Maxine, we won't let you go, all right? We'll come back and get you, all right? But I want you to know that you've done so well, and I think we're excited about you being African-American, and this being that we're celebrating Black History Month, you have most certainly made the African-American community proud. You've made me proud as I'm working with you. You are one that have just carried the banner, you've carried the stature, and like Mr. Roach said, you'll probably be there 15 years if you don't decide to do something else. But knowing you, you'll probably do something else. But I'm so glad that we had a part of you, and I hope that Dr. Bridget Williams heard coming from your mouth that Maxine was your idol. We love you, Jennifer, and the best to you and your family.
Thank you. Ms. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Margaret, we love you too. I know, I want you to feel the love. I want you to feel the love. We love you too. Absolutely. And Jennifer, I wish you the best of luck. Loved having you over at Lake Nona, it was great having you at District Two, and you'll be missed. But I wish you and Margaret all the best of luck. I love it, I think you're both ready to get to work, and I know you guys will have great successes. So thank you.
Well, Ms. Olino, Ms. Bellinger, let me close by saying, Ms. Olino, thank you for reminding me with your wonderful dress, that Valentine's Day is Friday. Great Valentine's Day outfit and the bouquet there, and you have wonderfully well-behaved children. I always like to recognize the children who are so well-behaved. So Danielle and Lorian, Loriano, did I get it right? Lorian. Stand up, and any other children who have sat through this, I know Ms. Bellinger looks like there's a couple from her family. Let us give you a hand of applause. All right. And the grandchild.
Mr. Sublett, I'm going to put a plug in. It's very nice that you think she's dressed for Valentine's Day, but I just want you to know that Union Park's school colors are red and black.
Ah.
So we're dressed in red and black tonight.
Well, and that leads to my next question, which is, I can't let them leave without finding out, just what is the mascot of Meadow Woods, Meadow Woods Middle School?
Stallions? Mustangs?
Mustang, okay. I know a horse is a horse is a horse, that's still a famous line, but I had to know. And what is the mascot of Union Park? line, but I had to know. And what is the mascot of Union Park? Oh, no kidding. Oh, cool. All right. Well, let me just say, congratulations. I share with every group of newly appointed administrators that these appointments from the board signifies really one very simple word, which is trust. And your family should be very proud, because it means that this administration, this board, trusts your leadership abilities. We trust your abilities as educators, and most importantly, we trust you with the future of our community and with our community's children. So, your families and loved ones should be very, very proud of this incredible accomplishment that we're recognizing tonight. Thank you very much. And at this time, you're welcome to stick around and watch the sausage get made, but it is a school night, so we're gonna pause for a moment to allow you all to leave. Thank you. this happy. I think we're happy because we don't have a very long agenda tonight. So, Dr. Jenkins, are there any changes to our agenda?
Chairman, there are two changes. Item 1001, there is an addendum, request approval of the bids to be awarded. The bid matrix was updated and attached after the final release of the school board book. And then we are withdrawing item 1403 at the request of Board Member Pam Ghul, request approval of school concurrency mitigation agreement regarding Canopy Oaks. And then we are also withdrawing item 1404, request approval of settlement in case of Miltry Raphael at General Counsel's request.
All right. The chair finds cause to amend the agenda as requested by the superintendent. Can I have a motion to do so? Moved by Ms. Flynn, seconded by Vice Chair Gordon and Ms. Robinson. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the agenda amended as proposed. All right. We are in public hearings. We have none tonight, so now we're on the consent agenda. Board members, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Okay, do we have any speakers on the consent agenda? I forgot to announce, if anybody's here to speak on anything, you can do so by filling out a speaker form that you can get from Ms. McGill at the far left-hand side of the dais. Should've said that a moment ago, but is there anybody here to speak on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? It's been moved by Mr. Roach, seconded by Mrs. Robinson. Is there any debate or discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Show the consent agenda adopted. All right. We don't, I believe, don't have anything on non-consent this evening. So, we are on committee reports. Mrs. Gordon? National School Board Association?
The National School Board Association, I was fortunate enough to attend in Washington, DC, with my Congresswoman, Congresswoman Corinne Brown. And I went with the Florida School Board Association, the Legislative Advocacy Committee. If you've noticed, in the board docs, the entire report is there for you. I'm not gonna go through it, but there are some, there's major information in there. We need to follow the bills. Everything that they stand for and ask us to lobby for, it's not what Orange County really wants when you follow the money trail, and you follow the group, and you follow what they're saying. Local control was one of the main issues that we are for. My Congresswoman, Congresswoman Corinne Brown, is for that. But when we looked at the bill, and we looked at how many had signed on, there was only one familiar name on the sign-on, and then we looked and started following the money trail. As we followed the money trail, and we asked questions, it is that, you know, you could be a school system pretty much on your own. So, I wanted, I talked to the superintendent, and asked that our Legislative Department, and I talked with Darryl Flynn in reference to it, we double-checked and take another look at it, because it wasn't what we thought when we got to Washington. The local control means that any, the Koch brothers and other organizations could come in, and once they approve it on a federal level, it would put the federal government completely out of the public school system. And then organizations could come in and say, if that school receive a grade, a failing grade, then those parents have a right to go where they want to go. It's easy to say, but it's going to be very, very difficult to, where schools are open to place everybody at Windermere Prep, if they want to go there. If they want to go there. And I use that as an example, because that's a wonderful school. And I'm letting, I just know that I think it's a wonderful school. I had an opportunity to go, I didn't see it. But the main thing is that there's not gonna be enough room for 187,000 children. So, we did not feel, I talked with, I spoke with Congressman Webster, we spoke with Senator Rubio's education staff, and we met with, Congresswoman Brown had really set up practically everybody we needed to see that was negative toward any bill that was public education-related. There are other bills that's listed there. I don't think that we're going to fly as well as we think we should on the Elementary Education Secondary Act. That was not a priority in Washington. The congresspeople were a little concerned. Why we were concerned with just local control, and not looking at bills that they were concerned about, that they felt was important, and that we need to get on board with them, with bills that they think that's important to the local public school and to the state of Florida. So, as I stated before, the Advocate Institute was awesome. It was awesome. And I really enjoyed it. I usually take off every year for the last 14 years, I've been going to advocate up there, and just hearing what other states have to say. And if we do not think that federal politics impact our local school system, then we need to think again. They are passing bills up there that we have no idea the impact that it's going to have. We have got to follow those bills. We have got to keep in touch with our congressmen and our congresswomen. I am advocating you. You all know that I am in touch with my Congresswoman. That's why when I go to Washington, my schedule is already set. I'm there, and she takes me around. I'm not walking in and out of the building. I'm riding on the train. She takes me into the hall. We are talking on the floor. I get to pass out. And I want to thank Scott. I really want to thank Scott Howard for giving me the local, the local Orange County Legislative, and Mr. Darryl Flynn chaired that committee. I had that to put in their hand, and everybody from Orange County was very pleased to get that document from us. But then that little one-piece, after we researched it, now I want you to go in here, I want you to look at the money trail, I want you to look at who signed that bill, I want you to see why they're supporting it, and then I hope that you see it is not good for Orange County. Okay? So, the rest of the information is in there. We all had a task. We worked extremely hard. We hit the ground running Saturday, then, well, pretty much Friday night, then all day Saturday, all day Sunday, all day Monday, and then all day Tuesday, up until late that evening, we were up on the hill. We were in and out of the different halls that, you know, Longmire and Russell, and visiting with our congressmen and our congresswomen. So, it was a great experience, but please visit them before they go. Invite them to your schools. Let them see the new schools that we are building. They don't give us any money to build schools, but yet that's what they were talking about up there, figuring out how they could make our community better. But we don't get that kind of money from them to build schools. We are counting on our local voters and local, and visitors that come into our city, our fair cities, to fund our facility bills. But this is something that they really should be doing for us. So, we have a lot of work to do. If you think that they don't want you in Washington, you had better look again. Most of the congressmen and women asked, where were their school board members? They would say, well, my school board member did not come from North Carolina, not this board. They knew that I was there from Orange County. We had our platform. But when I passed other congressmen and congresswomen, and they said, well, oh, my gosh, my school board member didn't stop in. Don't they realize how important this day is up on the hill? So, it is a very important day, and I'm so glad that I went, and I'm glad that we were represented, and we have got to follow the bill. We must follow the money, and we must see what is important to Congress as it relates to public education. You did receive your button. Now, there is a program that the National School Board system is pushing, and it's National School Board Association, Stand Up For Public Schools. The biggest thing that they want us to do is if we know of, you know, like superstars, I call them like, what is it? We have Judge Perry, I'm just thinking of him, because he's known. They gave us several superstars that's going to push public education, stand up for public education. They are asking our school students to call in on the national school line, and letting them know that they received a good public education. So, they asked, like, if you know, like, I think I know, you know, Ms. Lucille Shaquille O'Neal's mom, and maybe we can get her to do something. I can ask Judge Perry. But they said, if you know of a star, and you can ask them to get in touch with the NSBA advocacy program, they would love for them to do a little PSA for them on Stand Up For Public Schools. Okay? So, that's my report, and all of it is in the packet. And I thank Mel and Val for really putting it together for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Ms. Cato?
Ms. Gordon, is there a bill that the National School Boards Association is doing, or did that disappear?
They were doing it the 1334, but it's not a, we were, after talking with several of the congresspeople, they kept saying it was a bipartisan bill. When we looked into it, it was only one person, and I guess they call if one person of the opposite party signed it, it makes it bipartisan. But when we looked at when it signed it, it was a year ago. So, it was not even signed. You got it? You found it? Yeah, it was a year ago. So, we began to say, whoa, this might not be good. So, as we walked through, and then our person said, yes, I'll sign on. Our job was to go and get our congresspersons to sign on. Daniel Webster said, oh, I'll sign it. And then you would be surprised how many of the congressmen and congresswomen did not even know about that bill. So, that was a little troubling to me with that bill. But after we looked at where the money was coming from, and some of the Tea Party members were pushing it, it scared us to death.
Just to follow up on that, Florida School Boards Association has been trying to figure out how to maximize the dollars that we have for travel, and that is a very expensive conference. The registration fee on it is like $900, is $895, plus you have a hotel room on top of it. So, this year, four of the executive committee members went, and what we did was, they tagged on a Florida day the day after that. So, the advocacy committee members who were there, the legislative chairs who were there, plus the four executive committee officers, had appointments lined up with Florida delegates, and then they also had appointments lined up with key people who were on education committees, because we had tried going up in the fall, and that wasn't working. In an election year, there's nobody there. You know, we had a hotel, and nobody was there, and we had to cancel it. So, we tried to figure out, how can we maximize school board members' times and dollars? So, this year, they tried doing the Florida days on Wednesday. So, they all came home on Wednesday. And the Long Range Planning Committee of the Florida School Boards Association will be meeting here on Monday. So, I'll be very interested to hear what the, what they have to report from their trip in the day, Wednesday, the Florida days.
They only, I know that we were, I was with them on Tuesday. And I think that, I'm gonna be honest with you, I feel I was more successful than them getting to the congresspeople. Because even when I went with them, we were able to get in to just the educational person. And Rick, your Boone High School student, sent accolades again to you from Senator Rubio's office. That's who they got to see. So, on the Tuesday, their calendar, I also gave that to Mel. So, what I'm going to do is ask them, I don't see it in the report, I will ask Mel, I gave it to Joseph. So, I'm gonna ask Mel to attach it here, and then you'll have it. But it gave you a schedule of what we did on that Tuesday, and I attended everything with them. But I went in and out, back and forth, and they had to pretty much wait. They had to wait. That's why it's best to make your connection with your congressperson. And then you don't have to sit on the outside of the office, because your Congresswoman, our congressman, is gonna take you into those offices, and make sure that you get what you want. But there is a schedule of the Tuesday and the Wednesday. I don't know what happened that Wednesday. I don't believe it was that successful, and the reason why I'm saying it, because people were already there on Friday, Saturday, and they were trying to get out of there because of the storm. And for them to hold it on a Wednesday in Washington, DC, for Florida was not good for me, and it was not good for any of the, any of the delegation that was there. And I'm being honest with you. Okay? And I'm recommending that they don't do that again. It was not, it was not, it was not a good thing to hold a Florida meeting in Washington without, and then you got it, when you go to Washington, you have to let the congresspeople lead you, and you gotta let them lead you around.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Gordon, for that, that report, and for your materials. Are there any other committee reports that I may be missing? Okay. On a related note, Council of Great City Schools, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to go this year. I mean, so, I am the delegate, so if one of you all is going, I don't know if anybody here is going to their legislative conference in March.
It's the policy one. I can't go.
Yeah. So, all right. Ms. Cato?
I have asked, when Mrs. Gordon was talking about our graduates who excel, there's an email that I asked the School Board Services to send today. Carolyn Mano, who's a Winter Park High School graduate, is covering snowboarding, or the X portion of the Olympics in Sochi. And so, she's on TV, and she's a Winter Park High School graduate. And she's gone, she's been working for NBC for a while. And so, we have a high school grad, Winter Park High School Wildcat graduate who is reporting on the Olympics. So, it's pretty cool. Carolyn Mano, M-A-N-N-O.
Wow. Very cool. I've handed out our work session schedule. We do have, just so you know, as a reminder, an executive session on Thursday on the West Orange Relief High School matter. And then we have our meeting, our joint meeting, next Tuesday. So, we do expect that meeting to go a fair while, potentially, and it's very, very important. And forgive me, it's not really my role to say these kind of things, but I'm gonna do it anyway. It's very important that if we can at all make it, and that all eight of us are there, I think that's critical, that we are well represented by the entire board at that. And then we're circling back on the teacher recruitment effort again, to address some issues we didn't hit the first time. Then we have a rezoning, wow, coming up in March. So, and then we are going to do another executive session on our emergency response, which is executive session for obvious reasons, because that covers confidential protocols. All right. Any questions on the calendar schedule, Ms. Flynn?
It's not a question. I just had another announcement.
Yeah, please.
About a year or so ago, we had a parent come in. About a year or so ago, we had a parent come in, and they were upset because something wasn't on their child's transcript. And it generated a whole discussion among us about how guidance counselors in schools can be a little bit more proactive in letting students, you know, high school students know what they need. I visited Colonial High School this past week, or last week, and here is something that Principal John Prince is doing. He's having very intimate talks with students, like in, well, 100 isn't an intimate, but bringing them in out of, you know, 30, 400 students, bringing them in, printing out individual sheets for each one, telling them what their GPA is, how many credits they have, how many they have to go if they're on track for graduating, giving them a little bit more information about the post-secondary education readiness test, so they know how it matters to them, what they do. And I just was very impressed because he's doing this with each student. And, you know, he said, it's sometimes just the little things that you do that can make a difference and pick up a few more successes. So I just wanted to pass that on. Seeing it was impressive. So I just wanted to brag a little bit about what he was doing.
I haven't, but, you know, I want to build on that a little bit. I had met with, for lack of a better word, a vendor about a year ago, who had a product, there was an app, I don't know if I've shared this with you all before, where any student can go on to this app and can pull up their name, and it shows just this kind of information, how many credits they need to graduate. It even projects out their GPA and says what the maximum attainable GPA. It's linked to the college system for the state university system, you know, what the chances are of getting into those schools. I really was enamored of it. So the only reason I throw that out there is, we just contracted, I believe, for the development of our app. And this system, I know I keep building up, and staff has heard me talk about it over and over and over again. It was piloted over in Pinellas County originally in two of their high schools. I'm now told it's in all Pinellas County high schools, and it's now expanding into Hillsborough County high schools. So I just, sort of my public plea that I'm, prayerful is a bad choice of words, but very hopeful that our app can do similar things, because I think to get to kids, and it's wonderful what Dr. Prince is doing, but I think we live in a world where every kid ought to be able to pull up this kind of information on an app and see exactly what they need to graduate, what their GPA is, what courses they still need to graduate, and even be able to go further and look at what the median, or not median, the basic entry level requirements are for UF, FSU, at least the state universities.
Absolutely. The more tools that we have that we can give to help a student get through, I think the interesting about Dr. Prince's approach is that he personally met with the students, putting, you know, encouraging responsibility on their behalf, because you can have as many apps, and if the kids don't go and look at it, you know, it's not going to do them any good. So with those apps, with that extra effort of going to the students and allowing them to ask questions, to see it right there in front of them, I just, you know, saw it as one more step. It's, all of our principals are working really, really hard. But some particular challenges in Colonial, I really appreciated what he was doing to reach all students.
Ms. Moore.
Mr. Jeno, it was an interesting discussion about the app, and I know in conversations with Mr. Thomas, the sky's the limit as long as our data can be accessed correctly. And I know we're going through some major changes in that. So certainly, from my understanding of that app, it's very comprehensive. But again, there's a lot of work that's going on behind the scenes to make sure that we can drive that app correctly. And so that's why I just wanted to come. And then I do have an issue for work sessions later when we get to that.
Now's the time.
Now's the time?
Now's the time.
Okay. Wonderful. I was just, I was thinking about, received from one of my schools who does a tremendous job reaching out to parents, and it was a survey to gauge parent opinions and values and of what was going on. But it was particularly, it was very written in educational ease, and there were great things. It's hard to say you didn't strongly agree with any of them. But my experience back, I'm going to have to pick on my gender a little bit, but when moms, sometimes, I think a lot of times it's the mother who makes the choice of schooling for the children. If we were really going to poll them and start looking at what they're looking at, it might be, my child's school, I like how it looks. I like that the parent drop-off line, I only have to wait for 10 minutes. It's less, at some times, I think about all the educational quality. They make choices, a lot of times, very subjectively. So if we're going to stress informed parent decisions, then I think we have to investigate how we're going, what that looks like in a little more detail, and how we're going to teach parents to be good consumers. So I would love to, down the road, have some sort of work session that starts fleshing out in a greater way what informed educational choices would look like. And we talk about it, we've talked about this for years, but maybe it's time, maybe it's time to start really putting it together in some sort of a work session.
Will do. All right. Will do. We'll get that teed up. Any other issues that the board would like to address before the summer in particular and work sessions or meetings? Ms. Cadel?
This isn't really a work session, but I believe Mrs. McGill is working, trying to schedule our module for master board so that we can get that done. It's my understanding she's working on the tipping point for all of us, which is, I believe it's an eight-hour training. And the superintendent is working on getting your, I guess it's your executive cabinet, to join us on that problem-building exercise. So just watch your calendars and know that we've got that on the radar to go ahead and schedule. The other thing is, because of our really good work, FSBA has waived one of the requirements that there is like a prerequisite because you, to do the tipping point. But because they've watched us over the past four or five years and how well we're working together, they have waived that requirement. So we can go straight to the tipping point. So we'll have one more four-hour session to do. But it was like strategic planning, something else and something else. And I'm like, we've done strategic planning four times. You know, do we have to do it a fifth time? Just, so they, Deborah was surprised. I said, write them and ask them. And they came back, and they said, yeah, we can do it. So they've been watching us and see that we're a highly functioning board, and so they waived it.
Thank you for your leadership on that, Ms. Cadel. All right. Quick, very quick PSP update. Ms. Cadel was there. I'm trying to remember who else was there. I think Ms. Flynn was. We had a wonderful meeting the other day with the major healthcare providers in Orange County. And by that, I mean the major hospital systems on the nursing initiative. So you'll hear more of that to come. But the response was very positive. We had DeMores represented there, Florida Hospital, the Orlando Health System, the West Orange Healthcare Foundation wasn't there that meeting, but we're getting with them separately. Cigna was also there. So it's really taken on a life of its own. I just want to let you all know, we're going to come back and do a work session and update on the PSP pretty soon here, where we can bring you up to speed on everything. But it was very promising, I thought, the response. And the complexity of it is, the conversation took a turn towards building an integrated health system for young people, not just in our schools, but building in the school nurses into that type of integrated health system, and looking at actually hiring a consultant to go out and build a plan for that integrated health system. So Ms. Pajazza is doing a very good job of stewarding our PSP, and we're going to have her in to give us a full report shortly here.
And actually, we're not paying for the consultant. Two of the healthcare providers stepped up to the plate and said they'd be willing to share the cost of the consultant, which I thought was refreshing.
And, you know, and I'd be remiss if I left one of the most important partners out, the Winter Park Health Foundation, and Deb Watson has been instrumental in helping us bring this together. Dr. Jenkins, I've been meaning to do this for three meetings. And Mr. Morris, I want to thank you on behalf of the board for renovating Conference Room E. We now have somewhere that's nicer looking to meet, and I just, I thank you personally, but I wanted to thank you publicly. Board members, if you haven't been in there in the last month, month and a half, you know, they paid heed to our observation that we didn't have a nice professional-looking conference room downstairs to meet in, other than the superintendent. So walk in there. They've really done a wonderful job. It's one on the way to the cafeteria. It's been cleaned up, new carpet, new walls. It's very, very nice looking. So, Dr. Jenkins, anything else for the good of the order?
Chairman, I would just mention, for those who did not see Beth Kasehob's article in The Sentinel, we are thrilled that she picked up on the notion of our high school students reviving the debate team and making SMART popular. That SMART's not just something that you are, it's something you can work hard to become. She actually witnessed competition and was quite impressed with it. I spoke to her on the phone, so we were pleased at that coverage. Hopefully, there'll be more to come on Making SMART Popular.
God bless Beth. I'm going to post it on my Facebook page. No, not yet.
Darrell and I need to plug, Darrell, you plug it. Being smart is cool. Talk about what we saw at, were we at Castle Creek? I forget where we were. The mathletes, the East math.
This started last year where a few, I mean, maybe three schools in the East started having a math competition, and they have a big loving cup, and whoever wins takes that cup. Well, it grew from a small media center, I think at Lakemont, one of the schools in the media center. Now it's in one of the larger cafeterias. They had a hundred, over 100 students participating. I think it's up to eight schools. And they compete in teams, and there's different math programs, problems that they have to do individually and then as a team. And they have the judges up on, you know, the judges up on the stage. And it's exciting. These kids are raising their hands, they're working like little, you know, math experts, and it's very, very cool. It's a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun to watch it.
Thank you. That is exciting. And, you know, on the same topic line, have you all ever been to Dr. Nelson Ying's award ceremony for the STEM program that he does? I went to it the other night.
I don't believe so.
And, sorry, Dr. Jenkins, I didn't clear this with you first, but I'm going to be sitting now with Dr. Jarrah to talk about that, and Mr. Fritz with Dr. Jenkins' permission, because it was wonderful. You know, it's a great program when 95% of the science projects, the moderator, who was not me, by the way, had a hard time pronouncing them. I mean, they really just blew my mind at what these middle school and high school kids are doing. But we're all competitive on this board, extremely so. I know that because I play trivia with you all, okay? And what bothered me about it, and I don't mean this in a negative way, it's just because I'd like to explore us getting more competitive in this, because I think we could clean up. About 10% of the winners were public school students from our traditional neighborhood public schools. Thank God for our charter school, Orlando Science, probably 25% of the winners were from Orlando Science, which is one of our schools. Okay? But I don't think it's from lack of, I don't think. I know it's not from lack of the ability of our students that we're really not participating with it. So I'm going to see if I can drag some of you along with me to that award ceremony next year, because I walked into that gymnasium thinking it was just for, in my naivete, for Howard Middle School. Didn't realize it was for public and private and homeschool students. And, you know, you would have thought that, trying to think of a good example, that Barack Obama and Elton John and, you know, and Ted Williams had walked in there together, because they were just so excited to have a school board member there to hand out the awards. So, you know, it's all about what we're about, which is STEM. And I'd love to see us start to clean up in those competitions. Ms. Flynn?
Mr. Chair, I think I'm going to sort of segue on what you were saying, and in regard to this math competition. What was interesting is seeing schools who don't have a lot of low socioeconomic influences, you know, a lot of parent involvement, the students sort of stood out. We had some schools that were, students that were coming from Title I schools, and they were just a little bit hesitant, but they all need to compete. And that's what I liked about this, is that those teachers are bringing in kids from all levels. And I think that's what we have to do, is the expectations. I mean, you know, you look at what Raheem Jones is doing, you look at what John Prince is doing, he's putting the expectations on populations of kids that often aren't having those expectations. And, you know, so that's what I like about what's happening with this math competition. I just see it growing from area, learning community to learning community. Love to get some District Five schools in there.
Well, that's a great note to close on. Thank you, Ms. Flynn. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.
If you could fast-forward 20 years to see how your kid's doing in life, would you do it? Well, we can't time travel yet, but we can see the future better with the new Common Core State standards in our schools. They set clear goals for every stage of learning, and they're the same for everyone, no matter what zip code you're in. So you can be sure your student is really grasping what she needs to know to get to graduation and beyond. Find out how it all works at CommonCoreWorks.org.
I'm a student at Harvard.
I'm IT.
Caltech.
Columbia.
Our advantage: support at home, plus great teachers and programs at Orange County